Five minutes, see if you'll show up. Or do you want to go ahead and start? All right. I think everybody wants to go ahead and start, so. All right, we'll start off with the invocation given by Commissioner Turner, then join us for the pledge.
Please take your hats off if you don't mind. Okay. Let us pray. Father, thank you, Lord, for this community that we live in. God, we're all neighbors and we all work together. And Lord, I pray that as we make decisions tonight and as we look at our budget and look at the taxes even in our own county, God, that you direct us in a way that benefits everyone involved as well as trusting and leaving our life and everything about us in your hands, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, Katie.
Commissioner Robbie Cheek is attending virtually, and we are waiting on Commissioner Goodman. He should be arriving any moment.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. Today, we were here to receive comments from the public regarding a tentative millage rate increase. I'm not going to read everything I read this morning. We're going to jump right into the meat of things because of what we've heard this morning. I'm going to state my intent, my original intent, and going forward, we're going to ask each commissioner what their intent is for the October 7th meeting. My intent was never to go with the full 18.2% countywide millage rate. The board is split. We're not in agreement on much of anything. But my intent on the October 17th is to go with the rollback rate. Commissioner Cheek, are you online? Can you hear?
Yeah, I'm online. Can you?
Yeah. Yeah. What is your intent for the October 7th meeting? Are we losing? Robbie, if you can hear us, you might have muted yourself.
Can you?
You were there for a second.
Okay, I think I'm back on.
Okay, we can hear you now. What is your intent for the October 7th meeting?
Okay, I may be repeating myself, but based on some of the feedback I've gotten over the week, last week or so, and the hearing this morning, my intent will be to set the millage at the rollback rate.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
100% rollback rate.
Well, we'll get to that. That's part of the presentation. Commissioner Smith?
Not to be misconstrued with a vote in a business meeting, my intent for the October 7th meeting is to take the rollback rate.
Okay. All right, so when we started this, we had four commissioners who indicated support for some form of tax increase. Mr. Turner was the only one that wasn't for any type of tax increase. We got some feedback from somebody. So now, it has been indicated by the majority of the board that we're not going to raise your taxes.
But that wasn't a vote, correct?
No, it is not a vote. It was never, it was never a vote.
If I may ask, how did the board take the action to tentatively adopt the rate then if nobody voted on it? How do we know Martin said no to the taxes if it didn't take place in an open meeting?
I can tell you, I did say no, though. I did.
Well, going forward, we will definitely record not only Martin's, but yours or anybody else's if we do something like that. Because you, sir, said you were in favor of a tax increase. You even gone on Facebook saying you were in favor of definitely supporting a JADA. So, but anyway, we're not here to do that. We can fight this out on October 7th. We're here to accept public comments after Nancy gives her presentation. During her presentation, she will explain what the rollback rate is. Take it off, Nancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening. Nancy Clark Gonzalez, I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and I do have a brief presentation that explains, we're going to cover just a 10-year snapshot for the countywide and also the unincorporated property tax, excuse me, I'm so sorry, property tax analysis, look at the major capital project funding and current budgets, and then a summary. So this first slide is the Net Tax Digest for Countywide Taxes. It's a 10-year snapshot. You could see from 2016 over all the way to the right to 2025, the tax digest is where we get our taxes from, and it rose from $1.25 billion to $2.44 billion, which was a 95% increase. That's the orange line. The green line are the millage rates over that 10-year period of time back in 2016. It was 13.94. The highest rate we've ever had was in 2019. It was 15.79. And at the time of this presentation, we were talking of a tentative millage rate of 14.1. This is a detail of the millage rates over that same period of time. That middle column is the millage rate. The rollback is to, it's the second column over, and a rollback rate, just real briefly, is the rate that needs to be taxed to give the county the same revenue that they received in the prior year. And typically, a tax digest in most situations will increase, so usually, usually the rollback rate is somewhat smaller than the prior year taxes. So for fiscal year '25, or I'm sorry, tax year '25, the rollback rate is 11.929, and last year's taxes, this does not show it, but last year, the tax rate was 12.1, so it would have gone down just a bit if the rollback rate is adopted. This shows fund balance history for the past 10 years for the general fund, and you could see from 2016 to 2019, it was actually a decrease. We were still recovering from the recession at that point, and we do try to maintain, and it's in our finance policies, that we maintain 25% fund balance to budget. So a fund balance is your savings. So what we want is 25% saved, which is three months of operations. And some of the reasons that we would want a healthy fund balance is we're a coastal community, emergencies, we never know when a hurricane and those expenses will come up, health emergencies such as COVID, economic downturns, credit rate and borrowing, just like if you need to go out and buy a house or a car, they look at your credit, they look at how much you have in the bank, they, and that's what the interest rate is based on. So that is something we would want to position ourselves well with that to get the lowest rate possible for any kind of lending in the future. We also have very high deductible costs on our liability and vehicle insurance, and also we are self-insured for health claims, and that means that we cover the costs as they occur. So we would always want to have a good fund balance for those situations. This is for the unincorporated tax district, which is the areas outside of this, if you're not in the city of St. Mary's, city of Kingsland, or city of Woodbine, you're in the unincorporated tax district. So this is the history of the digest. Again, the orange line is the net digest. Now, this is in millions because it's much smaller than countywide. So in 2016, it was 397 million net digest, and it's risen to the current year of 657 million, and that's a 65% increase in net digest value, which is very different than the countywide, which was 95% increase over that period. The green line shows the historic millage rates from 2016 to 2025, the low rate of .67, it was that for many, many years. The highest rate was in 2019, and it's, we've taken the rollback, and at the time of this presentation, we were presenting 2.6 as the millage rate. And this is just a detail of all those millage rates, the highlighted area when it did hit the highest. The cause of that is we were trying to purchase more fire equipment, and since then, that has really been the focus of the unincorporated tax district, is engines and tankers, and we also have the right-of-way mowing on the unincorporated. And this is also where the PSA is funded from. There's all different funding areas within a government, and that's where all of that goes. This is the fund balance history of the unincorporated tax district. It's not set by the same rules as the general fund that we don't have to maintain a 25% fund balance, but that's on the far right, you could see that's what I'm estimating for the end of fiscal year '25. It's a point in time. So as of June 30th, 2025, I'm expecting it to be just over a million in savings. Property tax analysis, one big thing that affects what we collect in taxes is the homestead exemption freeze, and this was in 2006, and Senate Bill 496 was actually passed by the citizens of the county. And this exemption is equal to the difference between the assessed fair market value and the base year. And the base year is the year that you purchased the home that you reside in, so it's, it is a homesteaded freeze. So this is an example of that. If you purchased your house in 2016 for $150,000, the tax rate at that point was 13.94, and there's a lot of calculations you go through, but you would have ended up with paying $780.64 in taxes. Because of the homestead freeze, eight years later in 2024, your home may be valued, that same house valued at $300,000, but the tax, it's still taxed on the $150,000 that when you originally purchased it. And last year, the millage rate was 12.10, so that would have calculated to taxes of $677. Now, without the freeze on the far right, you could see that if your assessed value went up over that 10, eight-year period of time, you would be paying taxes on that $300,000, which would have resulted in $1,403 in taxes, so that the homestead freeze from 2006 is, has been a real benefit for the citizens of the county in savings. And this chart shows that cumulative savings over the years. So back when the digest was not really growing, you could see that there wasn't really a lot of savings for citizens, but in the last five or six years, as the digest has really risen, you know, if you purchased your home at that 150 and it just keeps growing and growing and growing, that savings becomes even more, it's a more of an exemption. So, but what this also does is this homestead tax freeze shifts the tax burden to non-homesteaded properties, and non-homesteaded properties are things like commercial properties. If you own a home and you rent it to somebody, that's considered commercial property. If there's citizens in the county that reside in another state and they're stationed here, maybe they're homesteaded in their own state, so they would not be able to get it. But this is something that one applies for with the tax assessor's office, and you get the homestead exemption as well as this homestead tax freeze. This is just an example for countywide taxes. This is the bigger millage rate. On the second column You even gone on Facebook saying you were in favor of definitely supporting a JDA. So, but anyway, we're not here to do that. We can fight this out on October 7th. We're here to accept public comments after Nancy gives her presentation. During her presentation, she will explain what the rollback rate is. Take it off, Nancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening. Nancy Clark Gonzalez, I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and I do have a brief presentation that explains, we're going to cover just a 10-year snapshot for the countywide and also the unincorporated property tax, excuse me, I'm so sorry, property tax analysis. Look at the major capital, project funding, and current budgets, and then a summary. So this first slide is the net tax digest for countywide taxes. It's a 10-year snapshot. You could see from 2016 over all the way to the right to 2025, the tax digest is where we get our taxes from, and it rose from $1.25 billion to $2.44 billion, which was a 95% increase. That's the orange line. The green line are the millage rates over that 10-year period of time. Back in 2016, it was 13.94. The highest rate we've ever had was in 2019. It was 15.79. And at the time of this presentation, we were talking of a tentative millage rate of This is a detail of the millage rates over that same period of time. That middle column is the millage rate. The rollback is to, it's the second column over, and a rollback rate, just real briefly, is the rate that needs to be taxed to give the county the same revenue that they received in the prior year. And typically, a tax digest in most situations will increase. So usually, usually, the rollback rate is somewhat smaller than the prior year taxes. So for fiscal year '25, or I'm sorry, tax year '25, the rollback rate is 11.929. And last year's taxes, this does not show it, but last year, the tax rate was 12.1. So it would have gone down just a bit if the rollback rate is adopted. This shows fund balance history for the past 10 years for the general fund. And you could see from 2016 to 2019, it was actually a decrease. We were still recovering from the recession at that point. And we do try to maintain, and it's in our finance policies, that we maintain 25% fund balance to budget. So a fund balance is your savings. So what we want is 25% saved, which is three months of operations. And some of the reasons that we would want a healthy fund balance is we're a coastal community, emergencies, we never know when a hurricane and those expenses will come up, health emergencies such as COVID, economic downturns, credit rate and borrowing, just like if you need to go out and buy a house or a car, they look at your credit, they look at how much you have in the bank, they, and that's what the interest rate is based on. So that is something we would want to position ourselves well with that to get the lowest rate possible for any kind of lending in the future. We also have very high deductible costs on our liability and vehicle insurance, and also, we are self-insured for health claims. And that means that we cover the costs as they occur. So we would always want to have a good fund balance for those situations. This is for the unincorporated tax district, which is the areas outside of this, if you're not in the city of St. Mary's, city of Kingsland, or city of Woodbine, you're in the unincorporated tax district. So this is the history of the digest. Again, the orange line is the net digest. Now, this is in millions because it's much smaller than countywide. So in 2016, it was 397 million net digest, and it's risen to the current year of 657 million. And that's a 65% increase in net digest value, which is very different than the countywide, which was 95% increase over that period. The green line shows the historic millage rates from 2016 to 2025, the low rate of .67. It was that for many, many years. The highest rate was in 2019, and it's, we've taken the rollback, and at the time of this presentation, we were presenting 2.6 as the millage rate. And this is just a detail of all those millage rates, the highlighted area when it did hit the highest. The cause of that is we were trying to purchase more fire equipment, and since then, that has really been the focus of the unincorporated tax district, is engines and tankers. And we also have the right-of-way mowing on the unincorporated. And this is also where the PSA is funded from. There's all different funding areas within a government, and that's where all of that goes. This is the fund balance history of the unincorporated tax district. It's not set by the same rules as the general fund, that we don't have to maintain a 25% fund balance. But that's, on the far right, you could see, that's what I'm estimating for the end of fiscal year '25. It's a point in time. So as of June 30th, 2025, I'm expecting it to be just over a million in savings. Property tax analysis, one big thing that affects what we collect in taxes is the homestead exemption freeze. And this was in 2006, and Senate Bill 496 was actually passed by the citizens of the county. And this exemption is equal to the difference between the assessed fair market value and the base year. And the base year is the year that you purchased the home that you reside in. So it's, it is a homesteaded freeze. So this is an example of that. If you purchased your house in 2016 for $150,000, the tax rate at that point was 13.94, and there's a lot of calculations you go through, but you would have ended up with paying $780.64 in taxes. Because of the homestead freeze, eight years later in 2024, your home may be valued, that same house valued at $300,000. But the tax, it's still taxed on the $150,000 that, when you originally purchased it. And last year, the millage rate was 12.10, so that would have calculated to taxes of $677. Now, without the freeze, on the far right, you could see that if your assessed value went up over that 10, eight-year period of time, you would be paying taxes on that $300,000, which would have resulted in $1,403 in taxes. So that the homestead freeze from 2006 is, has been a real benefit for the citizens of the county in savings. And this chart shows that cumulative savings over the years. So back when the digest was not really growing, you could see that there wasn't really a lot of savings for citizens, but in the last five or six years, as the digest has really risen, you know, if you purchased your home at that 150, and it just keeps growing and growing and growing, that savings becomes even more. It's a more of an exemption. So, but what this also does is this homestead tax freeze shifts the tax burden to non-homesteaded properties. And non-homesteaded properties are things like commercial properties. If you own a home and you rent it to somebody, that's considered commercial property. If there's citizens in the county that reside in another state and they're stationed here, maybe they're homesteaded in their own state, so they would not be able to get it. But this is something that one applies for with the Tax Assessor's Office, and you get the homestead exemption as well as this homestead tax freeze. This is just an example for countywide taxes. This is the bigger millage rate. On the second column over, the first column with figures, that's the 11.929, that's the rollback rate. So if you were being taxed at a $300,000 fair market value, the way the calculation works is we take 40% of that fair market value, then we take out a $4,000 homestead exemption, which is not the freeze, it's a homestead exemption. That comes down to a taxable value. We apply the millage rate, and your taxes are $1,384. On the far right was the original advertised rate of 14.1, so that same home would have been $1,636, a $252 increase. This is the same for the unincorporated. That first column, the rollback rate, is 1.123. And on the far right, it's 2.6, which was the advertised rate. So that would have been an increase of $171. And what this does is, when we tax property, it creates revenue for the county. So the calculation comes down to is just applying that millage rate to the taxable digest, and we would come down, just the second number up from the bottom, is the net property tax collections that would be projected at the 11.929 rollback rate, which is the darker orange one. And the darker green is the unincorporated rollback rate. So we would expect to collect 719, excuse me, 719,85 in taxes. And the capital projects that have been discussed were a new jail, a 300-bed facility. It's a strategic top priority plan. It was estimated at $50 million, various funding sources. There should be excess funding in Sploß State, but we won't have that until all the projects are complete. Sploß 9 has $10 million allocated. The tax increase was going to create 3.5 million in reserves to apply towards that loan. So the projected amount is 32.5 million for the jail that would, we would need a loan or a bond financing on. Also, the animal control shelter is projected or estimated at $3,000, I'm sorry, $3 million. And those two added together, the whole bond amount would be 35.5 million. So to estimate that over 20 years at a 5% interest rate, all estimates and assumptions, we would come up with a $2.8 million annual payment that would have to come out of the general fund. This is, I won't go through this, but this is the amortization schedule, like any loan schedule. If you get a car, a six-year loan or a seven-year loan, they tell you how much you're going to be paying each year in principal and interest. This is another major project, which is the Joint Development Authority. They have requested additional funding, up to 1.25 million additional. This is all funded by the general fund, and there is a draft intergovernmental agreement that we received the middle of September that would be funding in fiscal year '27 of 1.5 million, all the way up to fiscal year '30 of $2,250,000.
For what? For what?
This is just a, let her go through her thing.
So this is JDA funding for projects. The last project is for county parks. And this funding would not come from the general fund, it would come from the unincorporated tax district for those outside of the city, the incorporated cities. And these are the estimates of that cost. And this would begin in January 2026. The PSA would no longer maintain the parks, and we would, this is the estimates of salaries, equipment to do that. So in year one, it would be $977,000, and year two, it would be $538,000.
Can you repeat that, please? The first part of that?
Yes. This, this capital project is for the county parks. The county will be taking over in January 2026, maintenance and upgrades and enhancements to the county parks. And the funding comes from the unincorporated tax district. So in year one, there'll be more costs because there will be capital equipment purchases. So that would be $977,000. Thereafter, year two and on, that cost would decrease. And of course, there would be capital equipment purchased as, maybe in year three or five, as equipment gets used, it has to be replaced. So, but those are the estimates for year one, and year two, beginning in January 2026. This slide is, it's just a snapshot of the general fund budget. I've grouped it by different classifications. The top one is salaries and benefits, which is 65% of the general fund budget. Contracted services includes travel, which is $200,000, which is .42% of the budget. Also, education and training. The grand total on contracted services is 7.9 million, or almost 17% of the budget. Supplies are 7% of the budget. Intergovernmental costs, which is bad debt, is from the EMS collections. We bill ambulances, we bill insurances, Medicare, Medicaid. So any difference between what we bill and what they pay is considered bad debt, so it gets written off. So that's what that line is, and that's 2% of the budget. Also, the JDA current funding, and then state and judicial agencies as well. And that totals 4.5 million, or almost 10% of the budget. And then transfers out are 1.1 million. That's supplemental funding for the E91 operations, and also Capital Improvement Fund. And the total budget is $47.8 million. And this is the same analysis for the unincorporated tax district, which the total budget is $4 million. Salary and benefits are 43% of the budget. They don't include all of the insurances and healthcare. That gets carried on the general fund. So that's 43%. Contracted services are about 2%. Supplies are just under 4%. Intergovernmental, this is where PSA gets funded, is 15.75%. And that was at the time the budget was adopted. We do know that we'll be taking things in-house, so that will be adjusted, but this was the adopted budget. And then capital equipment, mostly for fire and the right-of-way mowing, that's 35% of that budget. So the total is $4,072,000. And just in summary, the way it was advertised, the general fund millage rate was advertised at 4.2 as a tentative, and the rollback rate is 11.929. Unincorporated millage rate rollback is 1.123. And we also, the, the board has to set a millage rate for the incorporated Woodbine Fire District, and that rollback rate is 1.361. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're very welcome.
Just a couple of things were brought up. You know, somebody mentioned impact fees. Impact fees that the county collects is just on the unincorporated area. So all the development you see in Kingsland and St. Mary's, we don't see impact fees from that. Also, if those developments are within a TAD, which is a tax allocation district, any growth in taxable value on those properties, that money is used by the municipalities to pay for the infrastructure in those areas. So the county does not see that. Somebody's mentioned about federal money. All the federal property and state property in Camden County, you got Cumberland, you got Kings Bay, you got State Park, you've got Celine Wildlife Management, all of that is off the tax rolls now. But they do pay us a little bit of money in lieu of taxes, and it's less than $100,000 for all that property. All right. Mr. Goodman, we've asked everybody else what their intention was for the October 7th meeting. What is your intention?
We haven't made a decision yet. I want to hear all of what the public has to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's fine. We based our decision on what we've heard this morning. I don't think we're going to hear much different. But, all right. With that said, Katie, you got anybody, oh, let me, the light, when it turns yellow, you got one minute left. When it's red, your time is out. We're going to give three minutes to, to everybody like we did this morning. You got anybody registered, Katie?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a, a comment. There's a misunderstanding about our role as we sit up here during these meetings. This is not an exchange. It is to hear you. We've been criticized for not answering your questions as you speak from the dais, but according to the, the operating procedures here, it's a rhetorical on your part, not a question-and-answer session. I chomp at the bit to, to scream answers to you, but I'm not allowed to by our procedures. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Now, going forward, we're going to have a work, we're going to have to have a work session to figure out how we go, how or if we're going to do these projects. Now, the parks, like we've said, and this was part of our strategic planning, is the intergovernmental agreement with the PSA. And part of that agreement is, we're now going to take over maintenance of those parks. So that's going to be a hard question, and that is only funded from the unincorporated area. So your city residents won't be paying that. I imagine the cities might be coming and having a conversation with you on, on what they're going to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
One more quick comment, if you will, please. We got criticized for the expression on our faces. I apologize for the way Martin looks. I'm so sorry. Personally, I've been gifted with what's called a resting nasty word face. And I can't help it. I wouldn't look this way if I had any other choice. I am keenly interested. Martin's interested. Everybody at this dais is interested in what you're saying. If you see me looking down, it's because I'm writing down your name and your comments. And I don't see anybody else up here playing solitaire. We're listening, folks. We, we look the way we look. We apologize for that. Look in the mirror, by the way. Thank you very much.
All right. With that said, you got anybody registered, Katie?
Yes, quite a few.
Okay.
First is Robert Baird.
State your name and where you live, too, when you come.
My name is Robert Baird. I live in Woodbine. I'm here tonight representing the Joint Development Authority. I know I heard some rumblings about, they saw that budgetary item up there and wondered what in the world it is that we do. And that's what I'm going to try to explain tonight. The Board of Directors of the Joint Development Authority is comprised of community volunteers appointed by the three cities and the county commissioners. And we're basically here tonight because, as you see, we're a big part of the budget, and we were listed as one of the reasons for needing a tax increase. And that's why we're sort of pleading our case. We're not for or against a tax increase, we're just letting people know what it is that the Joint Development Authority does. We are looking ways to promote, encourage, and enable commercial and industrial growth on a countywide basis. We do this for a number of reasons, but I think it can be summed up rather simply. Our goal is to improve the quality of life for all Camden County residents by increasing the availability of good-paying jobs and expanding our tax base into commercial and industrial areas so that we are not so dependent upon residential tax income. According to a recent study in a Camden, or a county similar to ours, for a private residence housing a family of four members to pay for itself tax-wise, the home must have an average value of $1 million, okay? Y'all saw the graph up there on homesteaded and non-homesteaded properties, okay? Industrial and commercial are non-homesteaded properties. They don't get the tax break that we get. They don't demand the services that a residence demands. So it is very good for a county to have a healthier distribution of tax income than we currently have. We're way too heavy on residential, not heavy enough on commercial and industrial. The JDA was put into effect in 2014 when the three cities and the county government decided that it'd be much more efficient to have one economic development agency rather than three or four separate entities trying to do the same thing. When it came into being, it was funded via a one-mill line item on the property tax bill. You actually got your tax bill, and it's a JDA, one mill. During the spaceport process, that was rolled back into the general fund. And basically, now, on a year-to-year basis, we are funding by, funded by the county commission. We have been in the process, about the last year and a half, two years, of negotiating a five-year plan, it was briefly on the screen up here, so that we can budget what it is that we're going to do with our money. To try to do that on an annual basis is very challenging. So then the question is, well, what is it you do with your money? We pay our dedicated, highly educated, and highly motivated staff. We have three full-time staff members that are in charge of economic development for Camden County. And we develop product. And product for us is property which is ready for development. And what makes a property ready for development? First, we have to purchase the property. We have to have clear title. We have to have well and delineation done.
Robert, your time's up.
Dang it. We do a lot of good stuff.
I got to be fair to, to everybody.
Dr. Baird, if you want to give me your statement, I'll include it in the record.
But also, this morning, somebody made the comment that the JDA doesn't come before this board and give annual updates. They do. We can get them to come give quarterly updates, if that's what y'all like. But, all right, who's next, Katie?
Mr. Ricky Manning.
Rick Manning from Bullhead Bluff. I came here with intentions of doing something else, but after this morning's meeting, I was brung up and insinuated that I caused y'all to spend some money on that gun range that you wasted. Well, let's set the record straight first, and then I'll get into my other spiel. I told y'all not to spend that money. Your administrator told you not to spend it, and it wasn't going to work. And here we are, still with illegal gun range. All right, now, let's go. Why are we even here? These meetings mean nothing. You advertised a 14.1 millage rate. Now, all of a sudden, it's to a rollback rate. That's not what you advertised. All of a sudden, we're up here, we're changing minds because of the outspoken community here. Look at them. Same thing you had this morning. I am against any tax increase. You have doubled, doubled your revenue. I have yet to see double services. Where's the money going? You can't tell me? I know where most of it's going, we just seen it. 65% goes to the county in salaries and benefits. Okay, now, you know, y'all, right here, your words, Mr. Chairman, advertisement by the board was based on a consensus of what the whole board was thinking at the time of the phone calls that were made to each commissioner. Since when do we make a consensus with the commissioners, not in a public hearing? Folks, this is not right. That is not right. Y'all, y'all came to a consensus without even being in the public. Your words, not mine. They're over there in the, Mr. Boatwright's words up there just about state the same thing. It's all in black and white, y'all said it, I did not. I will use your words against you, trust me. I mean, here's your other words. Allocate Spots Fund for a New Jail ensures, that word means a lot, ensures, that the county addresses these critical public safety meetings without creating property tax increases. Your words again. Y'all fooled everybody in passing spots because you promised no tax increase. Here you are, changing from 14.1, now you're just going to go to a rollback rate. Folks, this ain't going to work. I mean, y'all got to be honest with us. Be open with us. Quit this wishy-washy stuff and behind the closed doors getting, coming to consensus because it's not going to work. It's not going to work. These people out here are not going to allow this no more. They woke up. I'm here to have just about every meeting. They're just now getting awake to what y'all been doing. And trust me, I ain't through with you. Thank you.
Kenneth Barber.
Good evening. I live at 2555 Forestham Church Road, and, you know, I think the board could eliminate some of these issues. You said there's no questions, but if some questions were answered, I think most of this crowd here could probably breathe a little bit better. A tax increase, we're all tired of seeing it, okay? Nobody has a problem when we got to fund the jail, when we got to fund our public safety. That's part of life. That's what we got to have to stay safe. I guess not being able to answer questions, though, that's the hard part. I guess not being able to answer questions, though, that's the hard part. $52 million, in my mind, is that 100% on the county? Is St. Mary's paying a portion of that? Is Kingsland paying a portion of that? Because if not, why does the county have to fund 100% of a jail when the vast majority of those people who go in that jail is not coming from the unincorporated areas? It's coming from those cities. I asked the school board this very same question. How much tax dollars are coming out of these apartment complexes that are being built? They had no clue. Person living in an apartment is not paying property taxes, but again, all the services that we're paying for. The response was, well, the property pays taxes. You're right. That property does, and not the people living in those apartments. All that is being pushed back on the taxpayers, actually on the properties. It's gotta stop. I heard a comment, and I think it came from the county administrator, that this tax increase wasn't due because of lack of planning. Man, when I read that statement, I sat back. Three sheriffs, the last three sheriffs, had told this board that jail was a problem, and nothing's been done. And then we all sitting here looking at a 8, 131% increase on taxes for some of us? I mean, I find it hard to believe that number was actually accurate. Is that true? We expect better out of our board. As a county hold, y'all have got to get together. Y'all have got to start managing this county. We don't have a revenue problem. We got a spending problem. It's gotta stop.
All right, I'm gonna take a minute and address some of that. The 131% would have been an increase on the unincorporated area only, and that was to fund the equipment and the maintenance of the parks only. As far as the jail is concerned, no, the city of St. Mary's or Kingsland or Woodbine itself is not funding the jail or anything countywide. It is the people who are living there that are funding it. Because the jail is a countywide service. So everybody in the county is paying for that. As far as people in apartments, the property owner doesn't pay that tax. The renters pay that tax because the property owner's gonna charge enough money to make that up. So, anybody else registered?
That's a very small percentage will be paying a property tax.
Anybody else registered, Katie?
Oh, yes, sir. Ms. Jacqueline Guy.
Hi, good evening. Jacqueline Guy, I live at 208 West Magnolia Avenue, Kingsland, Georgia. I'm probably not gonna say a lot different than what you've heard from probably another 300 people today, but I just wanna touch on it. I have an open letter. I just wanna say I'm in opposition to these taxes, and there's a number of reasons why. I have a letter from the state representative, Stephen Zantz, who even claims, his last sentence of the first paragraph of his letter, his open letter, says Camden County already spends more resident and taxes at a higher rate than nearly every county in a similar size in Georgia. My question is, why? The average county budget among peers is about $57.5 million. Camden County's budget is $67.3. That's $10 million higher. Even without this proposed increase, Camden already has the second highest millage rate in this comparable study. Simply put, Camden County does not have a revenue problem, as you've heard from other people. It has a spending problem. And that, I have to agree with our state representative. And if our state representative sees it, there's a problem. There's a problem, y'all. My question to the board is a little bit more personal than what you've heard. It's not about just dollars and cents and what's on a graph and what's not. Do you morally and ethically feel that this is the time that you should be raising county millage rates, charging these people 18.2 more percent in taxes, when they're already, when food and rent has almost doubled? Have you taken into consideration that there are a large portion of this county that are retired, living off the social security? If you haven't received a social security check yet, you might wanna check it out. They're not that big, so you best hope you have a good pension. Parents today are trying to raise children, and they are paying double rent, double food, and they're sometimes working three jobs between them just to eke out a living. People are already struggling to put food on their tables, supply basic need for their families and children, and now you're asking them to pay more taxes on top of all that. And I was thinking about something. You know, if you're an employee, you're lucky to get, to receive a 1%, 2%, maybe if you're really lucky, you'll get a 3% cost of living increase. If you're lucky, many years, they get nothing.
Your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mark.
Steve Gross, is he here?
Madam Clerk. For any individual who has a prepared written statement, if we wanna remind them, if they wanna hand that to you.
Yes, Ms. Guy, if you want to give me your statement, I can include that in the record. And that goes for anyone else, if you have a written statement. Thank you. All right, and just one more time, Steve Gross. Sean Rogers. There we go.
My name is Sean Rogers. I live at 110 Blackwater Court in Kingsland, Georgia. About 99% of the questions I had or statements I wanted to make have already been answered either through the slideshow or from folks that have already come up to the podium. However, a couple of things that I came up along the way is during the slideshow presentation in the lower-left corner, there was a little statement in there that said that the current information was unaudited, but the audit was in progress. Anybody have any idea when that audit is supposed to be completed? And when it is, will that information be made publicly available? All right, secondly, the other issue that came up, I started thinking about, is regarding Yeah, I just totally derailed. I lost my train of thought. But I did have something else, but I'll come to it later, and I'll address it at a different time. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just jump in before somebody else gets started. We are in the middle of our fiscal year 25 audit. The fiscal year ended on June 30th. State law requires that we submit the audit by December 31st. The field auditors, we've been providing them information probably for two or three months now, and they're coming in for their field audit the beginning of November. And we do expect to be filing our audit on time. And at that point, when we submit it to the federal and also state, we post it on the website, and prior years are posted. So if you go to the county website and you go to the finance page, there's a place for documents, and you'll see all of the budgets and also all of our audits. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Nancy.
And I also don't like to put on a PowerPoint slide a final figure when I know that it's still in process. So I always make a notation and also a source. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. All right, Katie, who's next?
I believe it's Mr. Steve Gross.
Okay.
My name's Steve Gross. I live over on Pinto Court in Woodbine. And I came in and spoke this morning, little different situation now, but I really wanna continue with my thought process, which began with some questions regarding school system, the uncontrolled construction of residential housing in St. Mary's and Kingsland, and whether we have an overview of what we're gonna need in the way of classrooms, what we're gonna need in the way of new schools, et cetera. All we're talking about is a jail and an animal control facility, when I think we're introducing thousands of new students into our school system over the next five years or so. So I then had a conversation after I spoke this morning with some folks from JDA, and I was talking about how I wasn't a huge fan of some of this development, and I think I share that with a lot of people in this room, that the amount of development in Camden County is very concerning. And so we get to a point now where someone gave me a funny look and said, so you're for no development? You don't want any development? And that's not the case, but we need to control development. I came here 12 years ago from a place that was in a very similar situation, and I watched my taxes go from $4,000 a year to $14,000 a year in a 10-year period, and I don't wanna see that happen here. I think, I think there has to be some sort of overall connection between school board, JDA, county commissioners. Everybody's gotta come together. Taxes are a thing that concerns all of us, and all of these different entities not working together isn't helping anything. Things about, well, impact fees, how will they affect the schools? Where is this money all gonna come from in the future? Spending problems, whatever, whatever's going on. The most important thing is that we've gotta cut wherever we can cut, and we've gotta make a decision. Do we want, in this county, to bring in industrial and commercial development to offset our taxes? Or do we wanna remain a quiet rural community without those things? And nobody's answering that question. Nobody, nobody on the board here says, well, yeah, this is what the people told me they want. That's your job out there, is to get with these people, your constituents, and say, what do you want? Do you want industrial development? Of course, the JDA wants industrial development. It's, it will justify their existence in the end. It's what makes them, what makes them wanna be here. And I love Rob Baird. He's a good friend. But again, do we want to offset our taxes with that? Or are we willing to limit development on a large scale and keep our taxes low in that fashion? Let's not have Camden County become Fernandina Beach. Let's not have Camden County become Brunswick. Let's keep it Camden County by limiting development. Let's limit development in all cases. We've got three acres owning out here. Keep it.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
But to tie into what you were talking about, you know, we have no control over the school system. We have no control over the city of St. Mary's or city of Kingsland. As far as the, talking about the digest, right now, 74% of our digest is residential property, which is a problem. 15% is commercial, only 1% is industrial, and there's 10% of something else. I don't know exactly what the something else is, but...
Bend the red light, Tony. Your time's up.
Yeah, my time's up, yeah. All right, anybody else, Katie?
Yes, Mr. George Thompson.
My name is George Thompson. I live at 104 Herons Nest Circle in Kingsland, over in Laurel Island. I rise today to strongly oppose the proposed property tax increase. Every taxpayer in Camden County has hardly hit, been hit hard by inflation. Prices are up at the grocery store, the gas pump, the pharmacy, just about everywhere we turn. But there's another quieter form of inflation that's often overlooked, the surge in property values. That inflation means our tax bills have already gone up without any change in the millage rate, because higher assessments automatically pull more money out of our pockets. Now you're proposing to add an 18% increase, and was it 130% for the unincorporated areas? On top of that, that's a double punch to taxpayers. Higher values push up our bills. Second, you increase the rate, multiplying the burden. Families, seniors, and small business owners are being squeezed from both directions. Let's be clear, this is not just a modest adjustment. For many households, it'll mean hundreds of dollars more in taxes each year. For a retired couple on a fixed income, that might mean choosing between paying their tax bill or performing their prescriptions. A young family might mean cutting back on food, childcare, or saving for college. For a small business, it might mean laying off a worker. Those aren't abstract numbers, they're real. Your constituents will have to make those choices. The taxpayers of Camden County are not ATMs. We are already paying more because of inflationary pressure. Adding a millage rate increase now is unfair, unsustainable, and tone deaf to the struggles people are facing. I urge you, do not balance the county's budget on the backs of families who are already stretched thin. Show us leadership by tightening the belt, cutting waste, and finding alternatives. Do not pass a double tax hike on the people you're sworn to represent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kim Sartor.
My name's Kim Sarter, and I live at 128 West Magnolia Avenue, Kingsland, Georgia. First, I'd like to say thank you for listening to us tonight. I think you've heard a lot from the community to show how much we are invested. I've lived here for over 20 years. While, I'd like to just ask, how can you justify this increase when the county isn't bringing in high-wage jobs, especially to West of 95? Everything is geared to building up St. Mary's. While jail and sheriff's offices are needed for upkeep, most of us won't see it. How many tire shops, pawn shops, gas stations do we need? All that is doing is providing cheap gas for people driving through. They go to Jacksonville, they go to Brunswick, somebody said Fernandina. There is no place for our children to, and families, to enjoy activities in our communities other than ball fields. You have to travel to Jacksonville, Savannah, Jekyll Island, Fernandina to recreate. What about opening the ferry to Fernandina or someplace else? The last time it was mentioned, I believe a county commissioner said, well, they drive. But now Fernandina is looking to, you know, to make you pay for parking. They all complain about people from out of state driving to Fernandina, and they're not happy, but they get our tax, they get our dollars. So why aren't we bringing dollars to this county? High-wage jobs. You talk about, JDA talks about bringing business. I heard one time there were supposed to be great ball fields and sports park along 17. Well, now you've turned that into a solar farm. And it's awful looking when you drive out of Florida back into the Georgia. I live here in Camden County. I live, I have to work someplace else to have a decent wage. And that's what we, I think everybody's talking about. We're having to leave this county to have, to put food on our table. There aren't safe bike paths for us to walk our children, walk our pets or our children to enjoy this community. Everything you have to leave the county to in order to recreate. Thanks for listening to us.
Hi, my name's Selinda Perry. I live in St. Mary's, Georgia. And I wanna thank you guys for your service. It's tough being in this situation. I would, I would say that I work with a lot of, or have worked a lot with, very low-income people and people in hospitality industry, particularly in St. Mary's and in Kingsland, all up and down the interstate. The interstate is really a goldmine for us, and it's not really managed very well. The county doesn't manage it very well. The cities don't manage it very well. We have restaurants and hotels, but they're not easily accessible by the people that stay there. And we can get a lot of money. We do get a lot of money for people who just stay here. They wanna stay here before they go over to Florida. They're coming out of Florida, and they say, phew, we're out of Florida, we're gonna, we're gonna stay here for the night. There are alternatives. What I'm hearing and what my bad- What I'm hearing, and what my background is, is in planning. And what I don't hear is a lot of citizen input outside of when there are tax increases. The comprehensive planning process is supposed to go out and reach out and see what's important to the people in the community. I don't see that happening. We hear that recreation is important, and so the parks and recreation are valid expenses, but not all of it, out of a sudden, figure out what the people want and build them. Not necessarily another baseball field, maybe it's a frisbee camp or whatever. Also with the jails, again, someone else had said, the last three administrations has brought it up. I've sat on several planning meetings with multiple sheriffs, not this one. But it is, the jail does need to be renovated, but it also needs to be staffed with, and I'm not saying anything about this sheriff, but it needs to be staffed with people who are compassionate and care for not just the community, but the people that they care for. There are many ways to have human-centered planning and human-centered purpose in the governance. And I appreciate you taking a mind to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Courtney Diaz?
My name is Courtney Diaz. I live off Harriet's Bluff, 758 Pine Drive. Increasing the millage tax by 131% in the unincorporated and 18.2% inside of city limits will be severely detrimental to the citizens of Camden County. Many residents, particularly those who have worked their entire life to pay off their home and now live on fixed incomes, face the very real risk of losing their homes because they cannot afford the sudden drastic tax burden. This is not only financially harmful, but also unjust to those who have acted responsibly and planned for stability in their later years. When the SPOS task was proposed, citizens were told that if it did not pass, taxes would increase. The people of Camden County voted in favor, under the understanding, yet now despite its passage, there is an attempt to impose a drastic tax hike anyways. This undermines the trust between the government and the people it serves. Rather than placing an overwhelming financial burden on the citizens, the county should work within its existing fiscal means, using the funds and other available resources, to prioritize renovations, improvement, and additions. Responsible financial stewardship requires making necessary adjustments within the budget, not turning to taxpayers to cover every expense through new or increased taxes. Any commissioner who votes in favor of this increase is failing to uphold their ethical obligation to do no harm. Approving this measure will directly harm countless Camden County residents, placing them under financial strain and threatening their security of their homes. Leadership means protecting the citizens, not endangering them through excessive taxation. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Katie?
Yes, I apologize. I'm having to coordinate bringing people from the other room, too.
Oh, okay.
Wesley Mills? Is he in this room? Okay.
Yeah, he's coming up.
Thank you and good evening, and may it please the board and the citizens. My name is Wesley Mills. I currently reside in St. Mary's. My actual home is at 198 West Pine Avenue in Kingsland. I remember a few years back, right over there in Kingsland, they proposed a tax increase right after the property values had increased. Same situation what we're in now. They had specific funds that they wanted to provide money to, and I remember specifically a room full of people just like this. And I seem to recall that entire board lost their job in the next election cycle. So you do still have the power of the vote, people. Anyway, if we do a little arithmetic, every citizen in this county is currently paying approximately $730 to this board per annum. Currently, every home in this house, in this county, every household, on average, is paying $1,700 per annum. That's $1,700 a year. Approximately $150 a month for every single individual. That's quite a bit of money for all of us. I know for me, that's filling up my truck for the entire month. As Dave can attest to in the back, it's an old truck. If you were federal, revenues would exceed federal income tax revenues as they currently stand right now, meaning that this institution right here collects on annum from the individual citizens approximately the same amount of money that the federal government does, par for par, pound for pound. And yet, we do not see the same infrastructural developments that we see from the federal government. We don't see the same revenue burden from the federal government. It's incomparable. The 330 million Americans, everyone contributed $1,700 in every single household, or $700 per citizen. The revenue for the federal government would be about $2.2 to $2.5 trillion, which is what we see on a federal tax level right now. We already acknowledge, as citizens of this country, that the federal government has a spending problem. We are seeing that same thing here. And I think it's intellectually dishonest, and as I alluded to, the reason I'm here today is because my neighbors asked me to be, because this is what I do. I argue about taxes all the time. It's my place in the world, I suppose. But the one thing that I find a little disingenuous was on top of the 10% increase that we saw last year, just based off of home revenues, home values being assessed, the additional 3% that we've seen this year so far, you also incurred another $1 million from the school budget, which is contributed to your tax office for collection purposes. On top of, there are already $2.2 million that we're paying. So it was about 11% last year, and you're adding an additional 18% on top of that from last year. I don't think the citizenry are ready for that. I don't think they're contributing, I think they're contributing too much as it is right now, and you're asking them to pay more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Steve Winkle?
Steve Winkle, I'm a resident of Harriet's Bluff. I'm here to speak on behalf of the careless way that this tax increase was proposed to the citizens of Camden County. It indicates a very poor effort by the county and the county staff to, one, sense the pulse of the community, two, protect the taxpayers against waste. I'm looking here at the budget, and I see that you're planning a 300-bed jail. Right now, we accommodate maybe 150, 165 prisoners. You're telling us that we need to be jailing twice as many people and paying for those people to sit in our jail, which is overfull and eventually full to the brim at 300 again. Do we need growth that brings us that kind of burden? Because it appears that the courts are not willing to put these people in state prison, but rather keep them close to home. I was surprised to find out that in the second quarter of this year, more women were incarcerated than men. There are a lot of surprises in there. We need to know the facts. We need to know why people are being incarcerated before you decide to build a $40 million, $50 million jail, and that you hired a consulting firm in fiscal year 2025. That's tricky, because that could mean in 2024. But you've never given us the jail study. It's not published. We can't look at the jail study to justify the money. But I will tell you this. In 2015, we had 52,000 people in the county, and we have 60,000 this year, an increase of 15%. But your county budget has gone from under $30 million to over $85 million paid for by taxpayers, a 289% increase. That does not register at all, other than the fact that it's a lot of waste. There have been some cost increases, of course, but 289%, none of us can withstand that kind of increase. And then, when we talk about the JDA, I went to their page, and I found it very interesting that the JDA on the page where they have top employers fails to include Camden County government as an employer with about 475 or more employees. And when I take a look at the list, I see there's only one commercial enterprise on this list.
Mr. Winkle, your time's up, sir.
So the JDA has not been providing jobs.
Turn his mic off, please. Thank you.
You can't say anything else. Let him speak.
Do you want to be kicked out?
I don't care.
We can have you removed, sir. Katie, who's next?
Mr.?
I'll go sit in the jail with the other 165.
Sir, please hold your comments. Who's next, Katie?
I have several others. Mr. Ben Goff is next.
I don't know why Steve gave this to me. I can't follow that. I'm going to be briefer, hopefully, than I was this morning, but I'm going to talk about shiny stuff. Raising taxes is one thing, but the reasoning for the need is a different absolute. What I've observed over the years, and find this to be no different, is that county administration has a tendency to throw money at every shiny thing that comes up in a reactionary manner. There are many issues related to this announcement, and I'm not going to beat the drum over them, but I do have some comments and suggestions about the projects addressed. And I'll ask the same question that was asked. Why is there a need to double the jail capacity? It's an increase of costs on several fronts, over and above the construction. And again, what has been the consensus reached by an independent entity as to the need for new or refurbished? How many open work orders exist at this time? And if there are open work orders at jail, why is there even one? Do the maintenance. Lack of maintenance is the reason we're even looking at a new jail at this point, from my understanding. Animal control facility, so we can house 20 dogs in the current facility. May not be nice and shiny, but what is the real need? What is the real need for the animal control facility? Parks. For years, we poured millions into the county parks through the PSA. Do we have any idea how beneficial those millions were to the upkeep of the facilities? Who kept score? Who kept score for those millions? I trust no one. In a real-world corporation, these would be questions posed to the CEO of the organization, and it is my contention that this should be the case here. You are the board. Man up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Mike Sains?
I'm Mike Sains, the pastor of the Harbor Worship Center here in town. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I rise in opposition of the proposed tax increase for a number of reasons. And first of all, let me just say, I'm all too familiar with the cost of businesses coming and permits. I'm in the process of building a $5 million church, and every bolt and every nut's got a permit attached to it, it seems. And so I get all of that, and we talked about impact fees. I heard someone, when I was in the other room, saying that we don't really realize money from the impact fees and all of that. But there's a couple of things that I would like to say. Camden County is already among the highest taxed counties in the state of Georgia, according to our state representative, Stephen Sains. No kin to me, by the way. But so if we're already there, and then we're asking for more, historically, what I have found is there will never be enough money for the government. There'll never be enough money. It'll never get big enough. There'll always be something else to do. And so I join the representative in saying, I don't think we have a revenue problem, I think we've got a spending problem. And there are things that we need. There ain't no doubt about it. I get it. But I think there's a priority that has to be in place when we can't afford everything in my church. I can't just send out tax bills. I have to depend on people being generous and work with what I have. So the government's the only place I know, federal government, that is, that can keep spending without balancing the budget and can just print more money. In conclusion, I want to urge this board to hear the hearts of these people that you serve and reject this proposal to raise our taxes.
I'm not going to be here long. I'm going to tell you guys, this seems pretty outrageous, so, some of the things that I'm hearing. I'm originally from California. Don't hold it against me. But these are the exact same things that destroyed California. It's why I left. I don't think that people understand. It's, you know, it's not your money. A lot of times, you get out of hand. Like, what, how do we know you're going to spend this money, you know, in the right way? Meaning, what procedures have you put in place to make sure every dollar goes towards these things? I mean, when I hear a $3 million facility for some animals, look, I love animals. I do. But I'm a contractor. $3 million is a lot of money. Is this a tilt-up building? Is this a metal building? What is it exactly? And why is it costing so much? I mean, you know, if these were shareholders and you had to answer to them, and your job was you were immediately terminated or something, I guarantee you, you guys want to be on those numbers because they would get rid of you. I've seen this before in California. This is why I left many years ago. And I'm here to tell you, it sounds like the same thing. I mean, some of these figures are just, if they're even half-right, half, I'm not saying all right, just a smidgen. There's a lot of waste and a lot of stuff going on. Who's getting kickbacks? Who's getting this? Who's getting that? I mean, you know, let's just call it what it is. I put in blind bids. I put in blind bids, and, you know, someone seems to underbid it by a ridiculous amount sometimes. Well, how's that happening? I mean, I'm not saying that's happening here, because I don't know. But there's not enough transparency for you guys to be asking for these kind of tax increases without any light being shed on everything. It should be open book to us. And without being open book, how can anyone here trust any of you? And I don't know you. I don't know you from Adam. But I don't trust any of you because it's not your money. It's our money. And really, we're going to sit up here and we're going to say all this, and you know what? Really, when it comes down to it, we're probably not going to have a say. It's probably going to go through, and we're going to probably have to suffer through it. But just understand that, yeah, we can vote you out, and we can do this and that, but, you know, it's just a shame. That's all I'm saying. It's a shame when things come to this. And I've seen it personally. Just look at California. I'm from there. I'm from Fontana, California, originally. Look it up, people. I come from a steel town. And I'm here to tell you, this kills, kills places to live. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
That is all the cards I have. I asked Ms. Brenda to check with the overflow room to see if anyone over there is wanting to address the board as well.
Well, in the meantime, anybody else wish, get up and speak. Come on up, sir.
Appreciate all the fine folks getting up here speaking. They've said a lot of what I got to say. My name is David Patrick. I'm a property owner on Jesse's Lane in Woodbine, Georgia. First off, I want to thank the leadership here, county commissioners. I know you run a double I know you run a double-edged sword. They love you and they hate you. You're damned if you do, and you're damned if you don't. But I gotta tell you, I'm here out of concern, 'cause I'm retired, and I don't like having to come to this. Martin Gillette's my guy, and, Martin, excuse me, Martin Turner. And I hired him so that I didn't have to come up here and talk. Did he do the right thing? And I'm depending on him, did he will? And he does. What I'm hearing, and I want to talk to y'all about leadership, 'cause I've held many leadership positions, and what I know about leaders is this, sometimes you get in a room with yourselves and your people that you pick, and you hear what they wanna do, and what you wanna do, and you lose sight of what the people want, and that's why all these people's here tonight, 'cause y'all have lost absolute sight of where you ought to be. All right? But I, I wanna tell you that there's hope. There's hope and encouragement from me, that y'all can put aside what I see animosity amongst yourselves, get real people. You know, I had the opportunity to coach little kids for over 30 years in soccer, here and other, other cities, Jacksonville, and let me tell you what I learned, and what I tell them little kids, when they can't find joy in what they're doing, or purpose in what they're doing, then listen, your brain's like a little load of bricks, and sometimes you got to readjust them, 'cause they all falling off the wagon here. Saying, I'm telling y'all, y'all need to pause, you need to readjust your bricks, all right? That's what I got for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarita Cuthbert. I am a resident in St. Mary's, and I'm also a property owner in Woodbine, the unincorporated area. So first of all, I just want to thank you all for taking the fire. I would urge the public just to kind of be more informed, under, I'm sorry, understand the budget. I have a sinus infection. But to understand the budget more fully, as far as politicians are concerned, I think we are trained not to trust you all. But from what I've seen, and I come to the meetings, I look at the discussion notes, I look at the budget, and I see all of it. And from what I've seen, in comparison to other areas, this county is a lot more transparent. So I just want to make sure that I give you all the proper accommodation for listening to us, having this public hearing, publishing all of these details, so that we can be informed. And we, as citizens, have to make sure that we're taking the steps to make sure that we see both sides of the spectrum. Thank you.
Thank you. Along the same lines that she was talking about, the county offers a citizens' academy, where you can learn about the county government and how, how we work. The sheriff also offers a citizens' academy, and you can even tour the jail with that one. So, come on up, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Milton Burton, and I live in Kingsland, Georgia. And I just wanted to say two things. Thank everybody for coming out tonight. And another thing, I also want to say that I'm like probably one of the youngest, one of the, one of the youngest people here, at only 24 years of age. And I just wanted to say to anybody else that's in my age group of 18 to 24, that y'all need to come out to these meetings and to understand what's going on in your community, not just the federal stuff, but also the local, 'cause that, 'cause that will affect you a lot more than what goes on up in Washington. And the second thing I want to say is that, I'm not opposed to development, because I'm 24, so I got another probably 40, 50 years here. I just want to, I think that the tax increase is a little too high, 'cause people my age, it kinda hurts us when it comes to moving out of our parents' house, getting our own house, getting an apartment. So I think that, go, go ahead with the development, but probably cut down on the increase just a little much. And also, if the government is, well, if, if the federal government is only giving us $100K for all the properties that they own, they're only giving us like 25 to 33,000 for Cumberland Island? Like, that could be a goldmine for us, not develop on the whole thing, but, you know, we all live in a, we all live in a coastal community without no beach access, pretty much. So, if there's any way that we can monetize on that, to get some more beach access, I think that could probably help us out with this whole budget situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Along those lines, I wish they would teach local government in high school. And as far as developing Cumberland, the Cumberland is owned 90, I think 93% by the federal government. There's a ban against bridges going to Cumberland, so it'll never be developed, probably never be monetized in any way, so. All right, anybody, anybody else wish to speak for the board? Come on up, sir. If you want to speak, if you can kind of form a line over here?
Good evening. Thank you. My name's John Peterson. I live on Trout, Trout Street up in Woodbine, up in Harrods Bluff. I came here three years ago from the state of Massachusetts. You guys would probably know it as Taxachusetts. You guys are doing the same thing, but there's a big difference. We have snow. So we have to pay high taxes, 'cause to get that stuff out of there is really expensive. So aren't the machines. We have really good schools. We have services. When you move into town, people are like, how are the schools? How are the doctors? How are the dentists? How are this? How are? You can't do that here. We're bringing in all this housing, which is a good tax revenue, I get it. But then when they ask, do you have a child psychologist? Well, we have one in Camden County. How about a pediatric dentist? No. We do have one now? One. When I worked for DFAX, we used to have to send kids up to Savannah. The problem isn't that, the problem is, yes, we need to expand things, but the county needs to come up with an identity. What do you want to be? Do you want to just be a place where you build houses but have no services? Sooner or later, people aren't gonna want to come. We need to find something that builds Camden County in a way that, yes, does bring in some good housing, so that you do have some taxes, but you also need to be, bring in services that the, that people who are moving in need. I went to the meeting in Kingsland about the development that they want to put in. Put in high-priced houses. Oh, where's a nice place to go to dinner? Well, there's Jacksonville. Why don't we have a nice area with good restaurants and art things? I mean, this is a beautiful county. This is why I came here. Please don't become Taxachusetts. You know, the taxes, I get it, but, again, we pay for them in Massachusetts, but we have the services and the things we need to back those taxes up. And believe me, they'll raise taxes probably on me, and I don't even live there anymore. So, find an identity. Start with that. What do you want to be? And then build your tax base off of that, but bring in services that people actually want, that will attract what you guys are looking for. Thanks.
Thank you. Come on up, sir.
Good evening. I'm Dylan Peoples. I live at 1010 Lampadoja Road, Waverly, Georgia, in District 1, which we currently don't have in-person representation from tonight. I'm gonna talk to you on a little bit of a-
He's online.
Yep, not in person. I'm gonna talk to you on a little bit of a different aspect of everyone else. I'm a younger crowd. I'm very fortunate. I want full transparency from you. I'm gonna give it to you. I work as a test engineer on base. I make $93,390 a year. I own 27 acres in Waverly. With this property tax raise, I'm gonna be paying over 7% of my gross annual salary to you, to the county, before state and before federal taxes included, taking off my salary. I'm very fortunate, like I said, my wife only works part-time, she stays at home with our three-year-old child. That's my dream, and I don't think I'm wrong for having it, and I think other people should be allowed to have it. Another thing, I'm also a member of Broken Spur Saddle Club, nonprofit organization in Kingsland, trying to keep this county ag-friendly. If you do this raise, it's not gonna be ag-friendly. You're pushing us out. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Pastor James Payne, pastor of Zion Sisters Missionary Baptist Church, 504 Spring Hill Road, South, Kingsland, Georgia. And I also reside in Kingsland, Georgia. And I want to stand and say, I do oppose, strongly oppose, this tax bill, because simply, when is it gonna be about the people who live in this community? I've been here for 25 years. Taxes have gone up. Taxes have gone up. We need a little more, we need a little more. But still, when I ride up Highway 40, I still see overgrowth on the road. I still see, when I go through the park, the parks are overgrown on the sidewalk, trash on the ground. But yes, still, we need more money to be able to give more money to the employers of the city, and to be able to have money for different things. What about the people? The people who vote, voted you into office? Are you gonna represent us? Are you gonna do what they say? The other people say? Listen to us. What, what would happen if you do something different? What would happen if you just don't accept this tax bill? You know? If we just stay in firm, make the necessary cuts we need here, and the necessary spending cuts we need here, and to be able to take care of the citizens that are here? Every time I turn around, there's a new project growing up, going up, a new housing development, new this going up. And, but you say we don't have money. Well, we don't have jobs either. We don't have industry. You know, we don't, whatever happened to bringing jobs to Camden County? We don't have that. I don't see it. What about our children? What about our children? There's no Boys and Girls Club for them to go to. We got to pay, parents, single parents have to pay an absorbing amount of money for daycare per week, per child. You increase this tax, you raise taxes, you're gonna drive a lot of them out, you're gonna make a lot of people homeless, and then you're really gonna have a problem in Camden County. Not only that, our retirees, people who retire, who want to enjoy their retirement, you increase these taxes, people are gonna realize they can't afford to retire, 'cause they can't get the medication, they can't get the medical treatment that they need. So we have to think about the people. So I ask you, be pro-people this time. Do not pass this tax bill, and do not accept it.
Thank you.
My name's Caroline Benn. I own property in St. Mary's, Georgia, and I reside in Kingsland, Georgia. I am a certified registered dental hygienist, and I travel an hour to Florida to work. I just want to say that, despite the fact that people can't get an appointment to get their teeth cleaned. Sometimes they have to wait 18 or 24 months to get a regular six-month cleaning. Even though I could provide services in this county, I can't, because the employers here can't afford to pay me what I'm worth, and cannot afford to pay me what they will pay me 30 minutes over the border, or an hour over the border into Florida. I also am a homeschool mom to four children. We made the difficult decision to homeschool, because the public school system has failed to earn our trust or respect. They can't do the 504 plans that my children need and require, that they're legally bound to do, because they're overstretched, and, like it was pointed out earlier, they don't have the resources. Bullying goes unchecked daily. Parents raise concerns, only to be given lip service. Classrooms are already at capacity, and our teachers are severely overworked and underpaid. Yet, despite these challenges, our local government continues to approve new housing developments, adding even more families to a system that is already stretched beyond its limits, without providing the infrastructure to support them. Because of this, my family pays twice. We bear the cost of educating our four children at home, while still paying taxes to support a school system we cannot confidently send our children to, and I do find that that is becoming more and more the case, with the more people that I talk to in the homeschool community, as it grows. At this same time, Camden is filling the jail to capacity, while misdemeanor cases are taking up to two years to be processed. The justice system is dragging its feet, and in the meantime, the county wants to raise property taxes again, after already asking us to pass yet another East Bluff tax, with the promise that property taxes wouldn't go up. Instead, here we are, facing another hike to fund projects like expanding the jail and sheriff's office. Projects that are not only unnecessary, but unwanted by the majority of Camden residents, as you can see here. Our millage rate already rivals Metro Atlanta, yet, what do we have to show for it? The mismanagement of funds and the inability to set and follow a responsible budget is threatening to bankrupt this county. Camden doesn't have a revenue problem, it has a spending problem. Taxpayer dollars are being wasted, while families like mine are being asked to carry an ever-growing burden. Raising property taxes yet again is not the solution. I urge you, honor your promises, respect the taxpayers, and cut wasteful spending, instead of demanding more from the people of Camden. I also urge you to be responsible stewards of the money that you already collect.
Come on up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, sir.
Good evening. My name's Dave Parkinson. I've been a resident of Camden County for 38 of my 58 years, and I love it here. I'm not gonna tell you that the people don't want this. Pretty sure you, you get that, so, I'm not gonna go into that. You had mentioned earlier that this is not a question-and-answer session. I feel that many of the concerns, the explanations, could be taken care of with a question-and-answer forum of some, of some part. If there's a way to do that, that's already in place, let us know. If there is not a way to do that, to put that in place, I would encourage you to do that. I think that would make many of us happy, just to find out what is going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate, what city he lives in?
Excuse me, sir. What city?
Kingsland, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
My name's Tricia King. I live in Kingsland. I'm not gonna repeat what everybody else has already said, but I am gonna bring some other glaring facts to the table. We already have a homeless problem, guys. Millage rate increases are gonna increase the homeless problem. Nobody wants to fix the homeless problem. Why? Because they don't want that population in their backyard. Well, it's in our yards. It's in our yards in Kingsland, it's in our yards all up and down 17, and nobody cares about the homeless, they just want to shoo them off. Increasing the millage rate is gonna increase the homeless problem, and it's gonna increase it to our elderly, our parents, our grandparents, that worked their butts off, so that we could be where we are, and disrespect them by increasing taxes and moving them out of their homes. That's not fair. Okay? We talked about the PSA, and how we got the parks back from the PSA. Well, the PSA just spent a whole bunch of Splots money on equipment. Is the equipment coming with the parks? Then we wouldn't have to pay for the equipment costs. Schools get extra funding in our area for military dependents that attend, okay? The school tax is still too high. I have seven children that have attended Camden County schools. Seven. I have four still in school. I have three adults. Those three adults have left Camden County, 'cause Camden County cannot give them what they need to survive in Camden County. Okay? I have a child in Savannah, making $100,000 a year, at a job that he could do in Camden County, but Camden County doesn't have that. I have a child in Charlotte, North Carolina, again, because the income he can make has to be made in a community outside of Camden County, because he would have to go to Jacksonville to make that money. Schools had to use makeshift classrooms because of the increase in population from all of the building. I had children in elementary schools, and the elementary school told me that they had cleared out broom closets to make classrooms, until they could get the funding to increase their schools. We can't fit in the high school now, yet we're still building. We have to stop building and work on the infrastructure. We have to have those things in place. I think a jail is important, I think we need that, but we have to consider all of the other things as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Amanda Davidson. I live in St. Mary's. I was-
I was grateful that there was a lot of people here today, because I came in late. And I came in late today because I come from Jacksonville to work. I live in Camden, but I work in Jacksonville. That's also a salary issue. That's the reason I work. I don't enjoy driving. It's not peaceful to me. It's actually quite chaotic on the highway in Jacksonville, if you drive it regularly. So excuse me for being late today, but you guys didn't notice, because I was over there. I first wanted to comment on the presentation. I watched it this morning. 65% of our budget is going to salaries? 65%? That's a huge number. I don't know, I just did a simple Google search, so don't fact-check me. I didn't check any company specifically, but it says the average organization or business or company operates on their ratio of 15% to 30% of their income goes towards salary and benefits. Yet we're trying to operate a government to serve its people with salaries at 65%, leaving 35% towards everything else that this county needs. That's not balanced. That's a problem. I want to talk about the way that this proposal came to be. If you guys have a need to make individual phone calls to each other to gauge interest, that right there should tell you, what you're doing is probably avoiding something that you would be doing normally, feel one phone call if it was allowed. So who makes four phone calls if you can accomplish it by one? You can't accomplish it by one because the public couldn't hear you. That's why. So right there, if you have to make four phone calls to get feedback from your fellow commissioners, you're doing something you shouldn't be doing. And a comment was made this morning in the meeting. It's how we've always done it. Why? That doesn't justify whether it's right. If you've always done it that way, and that's not allowed, you've always been doing it wrong. Yet you're opposed when one of your commissioners says, "I think you're doing this wrong," and you fight it hard, instead of saying, "Maybe we are doing it wrong. Maybe we need to look at how we're doing it, and maybe we don't need to repeat the same stuff we've done in the past that clearly may not have been correct." I also want to talk about the jail. I'll try to be quick. I'm not opposed to jail having better facilities, but why do we need 300 beds? Because I've, my opinion is, we need to accommodate more people staying in that jail, because our district attorney's office isn't prosecuting cases at a reasonable rate, and we should not have to accommodate more people, because that office can't get people out of jail, for simple violations that they should not be in jail for one, two years. I'm not saying criminals don't deserve to be punished. I'm not saying they don't, some of them don't deserve to be in a jail for whatever their sentence was. But why are we having people in that jail, sitting there waiting for their case, when we really know it's just going to get dismissed, because the district attorney's office isn't doing what they're supposed to be doing?
Time's up, man.
Good evening, commissioners, fellow residents. I'm not a very good speaker at all, but I did want to...
Could you name?
I'm sorry. Matt Thornton. I live on Lampadocia in Waverly.
Thank you.
Very unincorporated up there. All right, just as an example of some of the concerns that the citizens have here, I have a small piece of property, 1.67 acres. Three years ago, it was valued at $11,000. The next year, it was reassessed at $28,000. Now, my taxes on it, it's not very much tax. It went from 150 to 340, somewhere around there. It's not much, but it's a good example of people that own bigger pieces of property has a lot more invested on it. They're paying a lot more, and that's a huge increase. And we shouldn't have to bear that kind of burden for that, for the misuse of funds you're already getting. I would like for you to look at, rather than building the legacy of what you're trying to do while you're in office right now, and build the legacy on not the shiny thing, but the residents' happiness and their, what they want, not what your grandmas and what you leave behind, but what you leave for the people. I do appreciate that some things for the public use is needed, but it's got to be budgeted too. We can't just decide we want to do it and look and find somewhere to grab that money from. You can't just, "Oh, well, we can't raise the millage rate, so we'll raise property values." "Oh, we can't raise property values? Let's raise the millage rate." You just can't dip it both ways. I urge y'all to look deeper in what's best for the community, not for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam clerk? I've noticed people have some of their statements on their phone. Is there a way for them to submit that to you if they've not been able to complete their statement?
Yes, if you'd like to submit them to me, you can go on the county website, on the county clerk page, and just submit them. If you do, contact the county clerk. That'll come directly to me. And if you want to come, you know, after the meeting's over, I'll be happy to speak with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Pat.
Good evening. I'm Pat Pachek. I live here in Buick, in Woodbine, Georgia, 507 East Fort Street. And a couple of quick things to answer questions about the 300-bed jail. Other jails around here, like in Folkeston and Pierce County, they can take in prisoners or inmates from other jails and make money if they have open beds, so that might be why the increase in the bed count. There might also be for DA James. They're becoming a major ICE center, and they may develop overflow problems that we may be an answer for them. Some of you, Chairman Casey, may remember that I used to work in Kingsland with Pastor Hamm, Missions for Camden. And about 10 years ago, the big thing was the Georgia-Florence Sports Complex. Now, that's been hidden, but when they had this big SPOST deal last year, that was one of the big things that are going to draw people in. It's a $10 million project, and I think it somehow got shifted into your budget or tax issue. So you might want to consider what else may be hidden in there from that big SPOST drive they had. And to keep it short, I believe we need a new assistant DA. I know you've paid for one that you didn't get, and there's all kinds of problems with DA Higgins, but I think to cut down that waitlist, it's a must-have. And I thank you for your time and the chance to get to talk to you.
Thank you, Pat.
Janet Heath, Unincorporated Area of Woodbine. I attended all of the SPOST meetings, and there was not one time during the SPOST meeting that there was a time for citizen input. You couldn't ask questions. You couldn't make suggestions about the SPOST. And yet you say that you have no control over the cities, and yet you have given a third or two-thirds of your county taxable money to the cities. We're getting to the point that we can't afford St. Mary's and Kingsland in the Incorporated Area. We can't afford them what they require, and yet we don't get the benefits or see it from here. So in terms of thinking about how you can reorganize, there's $85 million of tax dollars. How much did the county itself receive in the SPOST? Maybe $20,000, $25,000? I know, million, I'm sorry, million. I know that the county really pushed to get more money for the jail, because you're under a mandate, or you soon will be, to improve the jail in one way or the other. It would be nice if we could see that report that came on the jail. We went to the jail. We visited the jail. You know we're interested, but you pay for information that is not shared with the public then. So the jail does need some attention. Out of SPOST 9, if we had gotten $25 million, $30 million in that SPOST, you might not have had to go to this bond referendum, that our bond that you're going to have to go to. And so you said, "Pass the SPOST. That'll take care of the jail." Pass this, go with this tax increase. It will take care of the jail. And yet you say that it's going to only put $3.5 million toward the jail, just a little bit of down payment. You're still going to have to have the bonds to go with $50 million. Maybe you could do $30 million and get a jail that will take care of what is needed right now, with the intent of building as we need more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Jack Boo, and I'm out there at Brown Town, F with the Folkeston. I got a question. Are y'all all employed, but other jobs besides here? Think about the people back counter. When I first, I came here, I think it was in '66, there was a lot of people that had done retired. They worked for $1.50, $1.60, $1.80, that I call in around about Pupville was the biggest place going. All right? They retired on very little money. Do y'all think y'all could live and suffer, or go through these kind of what y'all talking about adding to us? Think about the people back counter that's old. I've got a little age on me, and I see a few more white heads around here. But can y'all, could y'all live under what you're proposing for all of us and the people that's really old, that doesn't have hardly any kind of retirement? That's it. Have a good one.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, here none, we'll close this meeting. Thank y'all.